So I'd like to welcome you to our regular board meeting this evening. Like to call the meeting to order. We have met compliance with official notifications. Full call, please.
Brooke Taylor.
Here.
Len Albrecht.
Oh, he is absent and excused.
I am here, Nick Schumacher.
Here.
Steve Stupack is excused. Diana Smith.
Here.
Welcome.
Thank you.
President Olson.
Here. Would you all please rise for the pledge of allegiance? The flag is in the back corner over your shoulders. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. This meeting is a meeting of the Board of Education, held in public for the purpose of conducting the school district's business and is not to be considered a public community meeting. There is a time for comments by members of the public during the meeting as indicated on the agenda. Members of the public wishing to address the board on any of the topics included on tonight's agenda may do so by completing a public comment sign-in sheet and handing it to the deputy clerk. The board requests refraining from making any comments involving personally identifiable information about students, staff, or administration. Comments should be respectful, focused on the items being considered by the board, and will be restricted to three minutes in length. So this is our regular board meeting. We did not have a committee of the whole meeting. So I will be going through the entire meeting and reading you the information. But action taken at today's meeting will be final approval unless otherwise noted. So disposition of minutes from June 12, 2023. And they are up on the board for all of you over your left shoulders. Is there a motion to accept?
Motion to accept.
Again, there's a motion and a second to accept the disposition of minutes from June 12, 2023. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye opposed. Motion carries. Report from the superintendent. There are two action items. These are two items that come up on an annual basis and we'll take each one separately and vote on each separately. First of all, the annual superintendent as the designated representative. The committee recommends approval of Resolution 23-03, an annual resolution designated the district administrator as the legal authorized representative for the district from July 1, 2023 through June 30, excuse me, 2024.
Move to approve.
Sorry.
There's a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye. Aye opposed. Motion carries. The second action item is the WIAA membership renewal. The committee recommends approval of the Resolution 23-04, renewing WIAA membership for the 2023-2024 school year, as per Ella Olson, our activities director.
Move to approve.
Sorry.
There's a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye opposed. Motion carries. There were no discussion items and there were no informational items that came from the superintendent at this time. Our board committee reports, teaching and learning committee. I think this is the first time in four years I've not seen anything on this. Action items done, discussion items done, informational items. Thanks, Crystal. Annual, I had to scroll. Annual notice of academic standards. The school district of Superior pursuant to Sections 118.30, Prens 1G, Prend A, and 120.112, Prend 13 of the Wisconsin State statutes will use the Wisconsin Department of Public Instruction academic standards for the 2023-2024 school year. These policies can be viewed on the School District of Superior website and on the Wisconsin Department of Public Instruction website. And we'll get that attachment. So what you'll see is the annual notice of the academic standards and stuff. And then as you scroll down, if you were looking at each one of them, you can see the standards for each one of the items that our school district, in fact, the state says we must follow. Any questions on this? I would accept a motion then to accept the teaching and learning committee report.
Motion to accept.
Second. Motion and a second to accept the teaching and learning committee report. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye opposed. Motion carries. Policies and rules committee. Action items. The administration proposed the approval of changes to the following policies listed by category based on Niola recommendations. The second reading will be at the August board meeting on August 14. So our first, we do need to take each one of these separately. It's in the administration. The first reading of policy 1400 job descriptions. So Ann, with the advice of Molly and Superintendent Skarsak, and Ed and I sat down and reviewed these as well with the superintendent. So anything you saw there in green as you were looking at that, those are additions recommended by Niola. There's a number of redlined information that's removed from this particular policy.
And for this one in particular, there's not a lot of change in process. It's just language updates.
Is there a motion and a second to accept policy 1400 job descriptions?
Motion to approve.
Second. Motion and a second to, for the first reading of policy 1400 to accept the job descriptions. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye opposed. Motion carries. Under programs, the first reading of policy 2340, This one has a lot of changes made to it.
This is like, it's additional language, but it's consistent with our current process and our.
Right, it better reflects exactly what we're doing all the time with our whole curricula, our extracurricular field trips that the board does approve.
Motion accepted.
Second.
The motion and a second to accept policy 2340, field and other district field trips. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye opposed. And carries. The next one is the first reading of policy 2412, homebound instruction program. Pretty much clarification of our homebound program and then the steps we must follow and parents and students must follow in order to be accepted into the homebound instruction program.
And homebound is different than homeschool. Homebound is when a student potentially is unable to come to school and we provide support to them. So sometimes people get those two confused.
Motion accepted.
Second. Motion and a second to accept the homebound instruction program, policy 2412. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye opposed. And carries. Professional staff. Now, is this the one where all the language is pretty much the same? Can we take each, can we take this as a group or do we have to do each one separately?
No, you should do them each separately. But we separated, we just categorize them differently. So you can see, like, for example, policy 4362.01 is the same for professional staff as it is for support staff, 4362.01, so.
Okay, so each one will take separately. Professional staff, first reading of policy 3139, staff discipline.
And this is consistent with our handbook.
So a lot of work between Ann and Molly.
Move to approve.
Sorry.
Motion and a second to approve policy 3139, staff discipline. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye opposed. Motion carries. First reading of policy 3140, nonrenewal resignation and termination. And a policy clearly stating the guidelines that we must follow when we address nonrenewals and resignations.
Motion to accept. Sorry.
Motion and a second, accept 3140, nonrenewal resignation and termination. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye opposed. Motion carries.
Motion accept.
Second. Motion and a second, accept 3220, staff evaluation. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye opposed. Motion carries. First reading of policy 3362.01, threatening behavior towards staff members.
Move to approve.
Second. There's a motion and a second. Threatening behavior toward staff members, policy 3362.01. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye opposed. Motion carries. Support staff, first reading of policy 4362.01, threatening behavior towards staff members.
Motion to approve. Sorry.
Motion and a second to accept 4362.01, threatening behavior towards staff members, support staff. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye opposed. Motion carries. And then there were, there are no discussion items. There are two informational items. The district student handbook has been updated for 2023-24. It is attached for anybody to look at and it is on the website.
Just to clarify, we didn't make really a lot of changes to the handbook this year. We have done a lot of work the last, the previous two years to update this. One thing we did add was AI as a new issue facing school districts and that's included under the plagiarism section of the code of conduct. Other than that, content is the same.
Any other comments?
Do we need to move? There's no.
It's informational.
So can I make a request? I don't know if next year we can see what changes have been added or changed or taken out, kind of like what we do with the different policies. Is that a possibility? Because it's hard to go and know and be super familiar with everything.
For this handbook.
Right, and you're telling us, yeah.
Um, basically, yeah, we can. Okay, I don't anticipate a lot of changes.
Sure. Yeah.
Okay, the next informational item, the district Superior High School Activities Handbook and Code of Conduct for 2023-24.
And Ella has been working on this with the high school administration. So Ella, do you want to just give a little bit of an overview as to the process we used and why we updated it?
Yeah, so I think it really started when we looked at the handbook last year, the student handbook for all students in our entire district. And there were some things that were very parallel from our activities code of conduct to our student code of conduct. Really, I think another thing is we had two documents. It was already, it was hard to decipher. I think there was about two or three people in the whole city of Superior that really knew how to read it and understand it. And myself being one of them and maybe Ray Cozy.
And me too.
Yeah. No, and so I think one thing that was really important was to make this document something that people can read, people can go to, understand what's going on. Most importantly, the students can come and have conversations about it too. I think we added a section, a large section on sportsmanship. Anybody who watches a game, goes to a game, officiates a game, knows that it's tough right now. So I hope that, I guess I should back up this. Because we are changing this, every single student and a family member needs to be present at our meetings before they participate in sports or an activity. So this is going to be my speech. It's not, I'm just trying to. Basically, this part is going to be what we're going to spend a lot of time on. Maybe we can call in an official to talk to. But it's important and it's something that is at every single level in our district. It's not just in the high school. So this is a huge part that's going to be talked about and that's kind of a big one. Moving forward, kind of making sure that everybody has the information that's needed. Again, I'm looking at the academic eligibility section. We're still trying to find a good balance here. And I think it's okay that we're doing this with standard-based grading, with trying to get as many kids eligible as possible, understanding academics are the top priority. Also understanding that there's a really fine line between the reason kids come to school could be sports and the reason a kid comes to school to pass their classes could be athletics or activities as well. So using our coaches and advisors and supporting people to make sure our kids are doing the best they can.
Ella, can I ask what the biggest change of this was, this portion? Are you able to?
The academics.
Yeah, for the eligibility, yeah, academic.
Academic eligibility, the biggest thing when I started, there were four grading periods that we ran grades to enact this 15-day eligibility. So if you have an F, it used to be first quarter, first semester, second or third quarter. Because we were into a standard-based grading, there are times, and I'm not an expert at this and I know there aren't experts here, but there could be a time if we ran a grade report halfway through the semester, there could be many kids with NEEs because maybe they haven't taken their final assessment that they wanted or they decided they want to do, they want to get a better grade, you know? So I didn't, I should probably say aye. Aaron Fezzi, myself, don't feel like it's always the most accurate representation. So if a kid has any year as F in the middle of a semester, they haven't, maybe haven't hit that standard yet or maybe they haven't hit instruction on the whole standard. So I think that's the biggest one. We also put it from last year, another change is if it's an out of, a kid that's not in season, right? A kid that only runs track in the spring. If it's a half first semester, then we're going to have to go back and per WI guidelines, they're going to have to take that 15 period, 15 days starting in the spring. So even though it might have been an F that happened in a different class and they don't have any control over it anymore, we still follow those rules. So that's something that's, well. That is a question, that's the biggest.
I think it's important just because of that in your role for a few years. The WIA requires our school district to have a code of conduct. For so many years, I mean, there was a student code of conduct, but then there was this athletic code of conduct. And for many years, our co-curriculars of our DECA, our Harvard-Battle-U.N. and the eight or nine other organizations, they didn't really have a code of conduct. So there was some discrepancies if one of their students had a tobacco violation compared to an athlete having a tobacco violation. The tobacco violation, the WIA says you must, and the key word is must, suspend for at least one contest. We had nothing for our co-curriculars. So that started way back in the days of Bernie Tomczak through my 13 years, through Ray's 14, 16, whatever it was, and now with Ella. So I'm glad to see that because I was very interested with this. I met with Amy and talked to her about this. And there isn't a whole lot of change, but there's really some nice cleanups and I have that.
There's a lot of duplication in the.
There was.
And, and there was some challenges in supporting activities versus athletics, how students' consequences can impact those students differently because their seasons are so different. So that, but we tried to clean that up.
I think the biggest thing too is that it is going to require spring coaches, our fall coaches, advisors of our spring drama, our spring musical play, to really stay in communication with their students throughout the whole year because a kid can't, you know, we have to really know what's going on in the first semester. And we know with communication, it's as easy as a, hey, we're coming to the end of the semester. Check your grades. If you don't pass first semester, you're not running the first 15 days of track or you're not participating in the, you know? And so I think that's my, as we kind of get into our meetings and talk to coaches, making sure that they're hearing that. And we do have to be in communication, but 99.9% of our coaches and advisors do that anyway. So we're just writing it down. Um, and then kind of leading into what Steve was saying is, is we get down to the actual behavior code of conduct. Different state organizations do it in a different way. As you guys have told it on, we're going to be following WIA rules again for another year. So they're very limited. You must have a student code of conduct, pretty much says, you know, there's, there's different code of conducts in every district around this. In Minnesota, it's a pretty much, here's what your code of conduct is for all schools. In Wisconsin, it's not. It's basically if you're caught with drugs, alcohol, or tobacco, you must sit at least one game and then you need to have a behavior protocol. But that's kind of good luck, have fun. So we are able to decide where we go from that. I think one thing that was really important is to understand that I don't deal with this very much. The students in our high school are amazing. We don't have many code of conduct violations. The ones we do have, I truly feel that those kids are the ones that need our sport and our coaches the most. And giving them extremely harsh punishments is going to remove them from those people that they need to be with the most. Right, our leaders and our role models, our positive models in the community. So I guess the previous code of conduct had a, if you get caught doing any of these things, you're going to have to sit 25% of the next season you play or the next activity you do. The next was 50%, the next was a full year. And then the fourth time, you're done. You can't participate in any school, any school activities anymore. We've changed that to your first code. If you get any, if you get caught with something, now you have a little, a choice. Okay, you want to sit 10% of that season or are you going to have 15 hours of approved community service that we can learn, we can do better. But if something, again, if you do that same thing again, now you are going to get back to that 25%. So we're trying to have more restorative approach, having those conversations with our coaches or with our kids. But with the WIA thing, regulations that you can see that first offense, yes, it's your first time and you got caught using a vape, you still have to have one day, right? So there is going to be some leeway here and there. It's not leeway, but to say, here's the behavior, you're going to do 15 hours of community service. I might really lead you to your community service being in a restorative way that could maybe help you with that behavior. But you could do the same thing if you were caught with tobacco or drugs or alcohol, but you are still sitting one game per the WIA and per our code of conduct. So I think without getting in super detail and really getting in the weeds of this, I think it gives our kids opportunities to grow. It gives them opportunities to do better and also not have that time where they get two codes and they're like, nah, I guess I don't want to go for a sport. I'm going to go make bad choices in the community rather than, I'm not sitting as many games. Maybe I can learn from an amazing footballer, wrestling, or track or swimming coach and try to be a better, better person kind of under our umbrella.
Ella, I just wanted to add that we followed the WIA process for reviewing this where it recommends having students, coaches, advisors, administrators at the table talking through this. So I was met multiple times during the last school year to put this together.
Right, and it's, it's, it's going to be so learning. We're going to, we're going to do the best for what our kids are. There are 100 different code of conducts in the state of Wisconsin for a reason. There's no one size fits all. We have to see what's best for our community and our kids. And I'd like to have an opportunity to try to.
So did you get input and feedback from coaches then while implementing? Okay.
Yep, personal conversations, emails, the forums.
Well, then, do you still conduct that coaches meeting on, looks to be on Thursdays or something? I can't remember what Ray did, but that as well or?
We do, I do weekly communication. It's hard to get everybody together.
Right.
We have amazing people in our community that are coaching. I'd love to have every Thursday morning, it'd be awesome. We do have, try to have meetings quarterly. We have meetings once a, once a season with all of our coaches that are coming up too. Yeah.
For the third offense and greater, it talks about a meeting with the activities director, excuse me, and principal adjournment if other penalties will be imposed. Do we have an idea of like what that looks like or is it just a conversation?
Um.
Because if they're already at a third offense.
Correct.
For doing the same thing, like they've already had conversations about.
Right.
You know, what would that look like?
So and Amy, correct me if I'm wrong too. This is kind of like when we're looking at our student code of conduct, right? There's, there's the column, what level it is and then what could your, your response be, a three to five or two to whatever? I think that's kind of where that came from. If we have a kid that has a third offense in the same thing, I'm willing to bet that we can go, if we go higher than that, we could have mandatory year meeting with social worker.
Yeah, I think my understanding, I didn't put this all together, but I think the philosophy around it is when a student's experience repeat offenses three or more, you no longer can participate without having a plan and having a meeting with the family and the student and the coach about what they're going to do to change their behavior. So the meeting is required to have a, put a plan together as well as it's a minimum 25%. So it could be 50% or 75%, but.
I think personally, looking at that, if that's your third offense and you're sitting out 365 days, that was a lot. But also knowing that there has to be something. The meeting itself, no, I would say that there's probably going to be more penalties, but it's maybe required penalties rather than you could do this, but you're still sitting 25. But I think it gives us opportunities to work with the principal and myself, you know? There's a third offense here. I know Mr. Fezny's probably talked to them many times before too. You can have that discussion.
And am I correct that the coaches can decide on further penalty or have?
They definitely can.
Okay.
What I'm requiring of our coaches now is just. What I'm requiring of our coaches now is just to make sure if we have that situation, we have to make sure families know about it ahead of time.
Sure.
They say, hey, you've got a third offense. You're going to get this from Ms. Olson, but there could be stuff more. And with that too, attendance policy too, is making sure that our, our coaches have clear attendance policies for unexcused practices. If you're not in school and you go to practice, that's an unexcused practice. You shouldn't be there, you should go home, right? But what is your penalty in your sport for having an unexcused practice? I'm not going to mandate it be one game because there's some sports that have eight contests total. There's some that have twenty-eight, twenty-six contests, right? So I don't think it's fair that way, but there should be policy. And all my coaches, I think they do have that. I know they have that, but just making sure we communicate that more ahead of time. And that's, that's kind of how we're going to.
Yeah, it shouldn't be a surprise. Sure.
It might be to the kid at the time.
So then I would assume that you're requiring still coaches, head coaches to have that in writing so that when they have their meeting with their parents and students that they're going over them, the parents get that piece of paper and they understand that.
Usually science kids, they have to sign off on it.
Signing those.
Sign up. So online, when you sign your child, you're saying that, yes, I've read this and I understand that. We know that there might be people that just click the button. So that's why we're saying everybody's required to come to those fall, winter and spring meetings this year just to make sure that information is out there and everybody's seen this document.
Thank you, Ella.
Yeah, thank you. Very nicely done. That concludes the Policies and Rules Committee report. Is there a motion to accept?
Motion to accept.
Motion in a second to accept the Policies and Rules Committee report. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Budget and Insurance Committee action items, gifts, grants and bequests. The committee recommends approval to accept gifts, grants and bequests received in June of twenty twenty-three. We have one gift from four corners for the all-night grad party.
Should accept.
Second.
There's a motion in a second to accept the gifts, grants and bequests. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries. Second action item is authorizing pre-approved bills. The committee recommends approval of resolution twenty-three dash zero five, an annual resolution authorizing payment of pre-approved bills from July twenty twenty-three to June thirty, twenty twenty-four.
To approve.
Second. Motion in a second to accept the authorizing pre-approved bills. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries. There are no discussion items, informational items, fund ten revenue and expenditure reports. And David, I'm going to combine both of these together as he will provide us with an update to the board regarding the upcoming state budget.
So this past week, we saw the budget, the same. Some clarity of what's going to happen next two years. Here's a lot of people saying, celebrating this. All the persons that want to say is just make sure you look into what they're actually deciding, what they're actually doing for us. So what they did is they bumped up the low revenue ceiling to eleven thousand dollars. Then they have an increase per pupil of three twenty-five. And now we're at ten thousand four dollars. So that we bump up to eleven, that sounds great, right? Jumping up to a thousand dollars. But when we take a look at it deeper into the numbers, we haven't had an increase for three years. If your standard increase is going to be three twenty-five, you add that up, that's nine hundred and seventy-five dollars. What they're doing is making up kind of the investment money that helps balance our budget. So this doesn't, doesn't help us as far as fixing school funding. But what it does is it avoids, avoids the worst case and even though we've been discussing the past, so that you know, there's deficit in twenty-four, twenty-five. That's going to be what I would say, but looking at the numbers is we go balance budget this year. This year's going to be, yesterday it was a little bit of a curve ball, but we're going to have to spend that money by September next year. If you don't want to lose it, you lose it. So that's going to be a lot of, we'd have to do some strategic things to be sure. And also the thing with which is with this jump up of eleven thousand, in theory, if we just kept up with CPI since twenty-eleven, we should be at twelve-eight. We're not even close to where we are. The other part of it is it doesn't close the gap, it doesn't fully close the gap between all us, us and other school districts. So we are still tied as the lowest bond of per pupil school district in the state of Wisconsin. You're as low as you can get. Whereas if you go compare us to Hudson, which is around twelve-three, so they can spend significantly more than us per student. So that's one thing. One of our also listed state was one of the things we really know in us as a district was them to relook at the spend reimbursement rate. We, our dream was sixty percent, our goal was forty-five, and they give us a three percent increase going from thirty to fifty. That's very significant with our spent population that we have here. So it's something that in the future, I hope the legislators really look at it because all that money we spend extra for Fund Twenty-seven for special students is coming in the expense of Fontana, which is.
So just to reiterate for the special ed reimbursement, we transfer about six million from Fund Ten to cover Fund Twenty-seven expenses. How much is thirty-three percent going to provide in addition to what we've been getting? Is it just like a couple hundred thousand extra? Okay.
You will get that extra two hundred and sixty-eight thousand if they would have given us, given us a sixty percent up. You would have been looking at an additional two books, let's say. Now we've got right for a bottom line, that's additional, that's a bill we don't have to pay, it's a bill of the state. The other really big thing we want to remember on this is the state has bumped our revenue ceiling up by a thousand dollars. And it's a responsibility of our taxpayers to pay them. The state is not bumping up the equalization aid at that, that level. It was a small bump, but it's not going to go anywhere near to that bump that we're getting on. So that's one thing to remember when we're doing the budget here is this will, it could affect our mill rates. The only blessing we have is the way we, we always try to keep our mill rate flat. So we were using our debt services to bump up our mill rate artificially bump that up. What that did is when we made that fee since January, we saved a huge amount of money. We're going to lose that option now because we're going to have to, we're going to have to levy to that. And we're not going to be able to use debt services. And we can, we can, can tax more. That's no longer going to be keeping the mill rate flat, that'll actually increase. Depending on how the public deals with that. Here, the public is very supportive of public education, not so much in a lot of other areas where they may. Also, canticle weight was not touched. That's something that's outside of the revenue limit. That has, that hurts by not being, and high poverty was continuing. So we'll have to, that, that's going to be buried in our levees, but just being. And then one final thing that I want to go over, it's important, actually, just to jump in. Our goal is not for the operational revenue referendum. I hoping this budget over these two, next two years will keep us operating operation refer. The one thing I want to emphasize up there is there's four hundred and twenty-one school districts in the state of Wisconsin. Two hundred and seventy-one of them have done operation refer since. We are the exceptions. We are, we are the ones that are feeding, we're financially responsible. If we want to continue that, it's all dependent upon the state to provide and some of the schools don't have to go with the operation. And finally, is, I had a discussion with other business managers and there was a, a significant increase of private school. One thing that was brought up was as of now, you don't see for-profit industries coming into education because the margins are so tight, it's just not worth the money. With this new, with the, with the bomb, we could see, you know, down the road, that could be different. We don't, we don't have an issue with private colleges as much as they themselves. But if it comes to where people think they can make money off education, that's what was made of the cash. That's why we really need to be strategic in our plans because cutting and cutting and cutting also makes other options. But overall, I was nervous about sticking ten five, so eleven's good. I thought we were going to get more categorical names, so I was disappointed. I just think the big thing is our goal is to keep a balanced budget, be strategic and possibly look if we have money this year because of us, we're pushing it in the fund balance. So then we can use that in future years if the state doesn't.
So where does that put the deficit then? Said worst case formula is kind of gone. Where's that put us? Three, two, what?
It's supposed to zero dating on if we're able to save money this year, push it into fund balance.
After the reductions we've already made or that.
The key is not a reduction to be going to make going forward and the fact that the quote superior is in stance. So when I say we don't have to go to operation refer, I'm saying we don't. We're going to be able to balance to zero. There will need to be continued cuts, but not the significant cuts that we.
But we've probably already made almost two million in reductions in the decisions that we've made in the last six months.
And this is all again contingent upon.
Right, I was going to.
Artificially holds us up, which means there is a bit of money.
Any other questions or comments? Well, then that concludes the Budget and Insurance Committee report. Is there a motion to accept? Motion in a second to accept the Budget Insurance Committee report. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, motion carries. Next committee report Personnel Negotiations Committee. We have three action items. First, the administration recommends approval of the July twenty twenty-three New Hires and Separations Report.
Well, to approve.
Motion in a second to accept the administration recommendation of the new hires and separations reports for July twenty twenty-three. How are we, Molly, as far as still openings in the district or how close are we? So busy as usual. There is a motion in a second. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Second action item is board approval for moving the Health Service Coordinator position to category forty of the WRS system. What does that mean?
Well, I was going to ask Molly to. Promotion.
Second, motion in a second then for the.
Molly, can you give some background on this?
So first category is the WRS staff one's forty, which is. Eighty, and then they're going to be with this support staff. There is language in the WRS manuals to have under category forty, which would be the same as the teachers. The difference is the teachers get one year of a school year, it's a year of credit. Whereas the support staff, they're based on homework's work. And so they're getting credit for the actual hours for that school year. It might be a full year. So it takes them longer to get the five years of resting schedule. So we did not shuffle about the language under category forty if the time frame was higher and followed suit to what had been done in the past for that position. But there is language under there to continue that position to be under category forty based on their duties. So we are requesting that for this position, the Health Service Coordinator gets moved to category forty of WRS. And the school is the one who has to make that decision. You guys won't make any decisions of employees changing headquarters.
And this is not an additional cost to the district by making this decision.
Thank you.
There's a motion in a second. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Last action item, administration recommends releasing Stephanie Gilman, elementary teacher from Great Lakes Elementary from her twenty-three, twenty-four school year contract. Per her request, effective June twenty-nine, twenty twenty-three, with the liquidated damages provisions enforced.
Motion to accept.
Motion in a second. Any discussion? Molly provided us with information on a separate email about this position and the reasons for and following the guidelines for liquidated damages. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. There are no discussion items, there are no informational items. Thus, this concludes the Personnel Negotiations Committee report. Is there a motion to accept?
Motion to accept.
Second.
Motion in a second to accept the Personnel Negotiations Committee report. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Legislative Committee, there are no action items, no discussion items, an informational item, bill increasing vouchers. Low revenue ceiling receives bipartisan support in committees. Legislation parents SB three thirty that increases per pupil payment amounts to voucher independent charter schools and also increases the low revenue ceiling for public school districts was approved by the Legislative Committee today with bipartisan support. The Senate Education Committee voted six to one to recommend the bill for passage with Senator Johnson, a Democrat from Milwaukee supporting the bill and Senator Larson, a Democrat from Milwaukee opposing. The Joint Finance Committee approved the bill eleven to three with Senator Johnson again supporting the bill. And there is a full article on WASB that you can click on and you can read.
Should accept.
There's a motion. And a second to accept the Legislative Committee report. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Other reports by members of the board. Hearing none, are there any district or program highlights from any board members or district administrator?
Just that we're getting into the season of planning to start our new school year, it's going to be busy.
Our, our band did tremendous job in the Fourth of July parade. And I mean, the multiple tunes that they played while they were marching. Pretty darn nice and it was very good too. There's succinct and very well done. And as you did earlier, approved. Consideration of bills and pre-approved bills, they are attached. We do need a motion on this.
Well, to approve.
Second, there's a motion in a second for consideration of bills and pre-approved bills. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries. And then Steve Stupackway, pay the bills. Comments by the public? We do have one speaker this evening, Mary Smith Johnson. Welcome, Mary.
Responding to the interview process, school board June twelfth, entered the position and filed a Freedom of Information Act for votes and minutes. Ask those people for the most qualified. That most qualified personnel stated in interviews their qualifications, which included twenty-plus years in advocacy for at state hearings for budget funding. Knows policy development specific to this district. Knows how to, knows the chain of command process and how it works for all students, staff, parents and administrators. Knows long range implications of board actions for all students, all families and all staff in our community. While the other candidates stated that they wanted to make a difference in the education of children, want to hear all sides of. want to hear all sides of situations. They have various leadership skills, which are helpful. But this was a ten-month position. WASB leadership says it takes five years to become a strong school leader. I hope that all superior parents and community members follow how the board decides on issues. I'm glad that you were able to have a new person put on the board. Um, but I, I do hope that the city of Superior follows practice. Thank you.
Thank you, Mary. And I don't see any other comments from members of the public. Hearing none, that is the end of our meeting, I adjourn this meeting. Thank you.
I said five. Thank you, guys.
Good job, Kai.